An agenda, yeah. It's the sex papers there.
Um, where's that? Where do those work?
It's behind. The gavel is behind your laptop. No, behind yours.
Oh, behind mine? Oh.
I want to make sure Andrea gets the pleasure of...
I don't get to gavel, I don't have the power.
Yes.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Colavina, can you take a roll call, please?
Sure. Ms. Driver.
Here.
Ms. Genovasi.
Here.
Ms. Lou, I don't see. Mr. Peter, Mr. Resnick.
Here.
Mr. Swicki.
Here.
Ms. Williams Galliano. She's here. And Mr. Wilson, Dr. Wilson. We do have a quorum.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with provisions of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News and The Times on January 3rd, 2023. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon Files. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being recorded for the purpose of board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on the YouTube Bulldog TV and the school district website, www.hvrsd.org. Members of the public who intend to participate... Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking. This will assist us with our record keeping. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries? So at this time, I'm going to ask Angela, our student representative, for your report.
Good evening. I hope that everyone has been doing well. I would like to report that since our last meeting, we've had a very successful Wichita Valley rally where the senior class won the annual dance competition and added points for the Black and Gold Cup. As for athletics, we recently had the boys' basketball senior night and the salute service hockey game where the HV choir performed the National Anthem. Coming up the corner, we also have our girls' basketball senior night where I anticipate singing the National Anthem. As I mentioned earlier in the school year, the student council wants to include more great competitions and activities. So for the spirit, school, the spring spirit week, we are planning on sponsoring a class hallway decorating competition. This year, we're making a small, small modification to the contest. Each group will decorate their own hallway to be in the theme of the class charity so that they can spread awareness of their school's place of cause. After the hallways are judged, the student council will then make a donation to the contest winners' charity. More information will be coming out after we finish the spring spirit week. Thank you.
That was fast. Well, thank you. That sounds like a whole lot packed into that. Yeah, is there anyone who has any questions for?
I do, so I'm embarrassed to say, I didn't know that each class has a charity. How did the classes select the charity?
Um, we're going to be planning on advising all the advisors to choose one with their entire, um, group representative.
Okay.
So it'll be coming up, um, in the spring.
Oh, cool.
Very cool. Well, thank you very much, Angela. Now, we're going to move on to student recognition.
So Principal Riley, are you here to introduce our student? Or you're just here visiting?
I would love to.
You don't have to. I thought you were here for that. I was like, oh, I didn't know you were coming. So, yes, please. You get put to work.
Thank you all so much for having me this evening. I am extremely excited to present a really talented HVCHS student, Rachel Thornton, to you. Rachel is an incredible filmmaker. She's received awards as Best Director. She's received countless awards for films that she's created. And Mike Vittolero describes her as the real deal. For Mr. Vittolero to describe anyone as the real deal, you know it's real. She's incredibly talented. We're incredibly fortunate to have her as a representative of HVCHS, and I'd like to present her to you.
I invited Rachel to join us today because I think it's important that we highlight the great work that our students are doing. We've been trying to do that at our last board meetings. Recently, I got a letter from the Food Pantry folks. Specifically, Ms. Lindthor's pointed out the wonderful work, the tremendous work that you did on your own time, creating videos for them to promote the food pantry. So could you talk to us a little bit more about your video, and then we're going to show it to the rest of the community?
So this year, I'm doing an independent study at the high school, and I'm doing it for film production because I'm really interested in film and I wanted to have more time to experiment with different things, like documentaries and narrative shorts. And then Mr. V reached out to me and said the Mobile Food Pantry was looking for a short promotional video to be edited together. And I was really happy to help because I love what the Mobile Food Pantry does, and I think that what they, what they're working to do is really important. And so I was happy to edit together the footage they collected, and it gave me an opportunity to try out a new sort of project that I'd never done before. So it was, yeah.
Well, thank you. So we're going to take a moment and show the video. Everyone can see it.
Why, you choose the volunteer for the pantry?
Well, the pantry, I think hunger doesn't just hit certain locations, it hits everywhere. And I think we realize that it's, hunger is in our whole community, and it feels good to get back to it.
I really enjoy helping people and delivering it to their doors.
Yeah, and I really just enjoy that, just going here and helping other people with my friends. I thought that was a really great experience, and I definitely agree with you about the idea.
I love helping out. I love to appreciate that people in our community want to contribute, and I even love to commemorate people helping instead.
So many of them say that they're so grateful, and they really are giving me the best of their best.
It's helped me a lot, especially at this hard time, you know, with the oil economy, everybody's losing their jobs, and the economy, and everything is going so crazy. So it helped me a lot in my family. My kids are sort of sending every South American to see what it's in the box, you know, with those berries and cereal, so thank you very much.
It's been helping to supplement some of the things that we needed, especially the canned goods, and the produce has been wonderful.
I'm very grateful to the organization. The people are lovely. I appreciate the people that package the items, the people that deliver it, and I'm just grateful for all of it.
None of this would be possible without you.
The entire people of our community has been incredibly supportive of the pantry.
If you're a volunteer donating groceries, donate a gift. Thank you.
To continue providing healthy groceries and produce to our neighbors in need, however, we need your support.
Please make a gift today.
Well, as you can see, the quality and the professionalism of the video, I mean, the Food Pantry is just so appreciative of the work as of mine. So I'll be sending this out this week to remind folks that food insecurity happens all year long. I know that our schools do a lot of work for tasks for Trenton Area Soup Kitchen, but there are folks right here in our backyard that have food insecurities and that can use that fresh produce and food. And I see them delivering beautiful vegetables and canned goods and all of that to the community all the time. Our staff members are involved, our retired folks in the community, our students, as well as our bus drivers drive and deliver food from the Food Pantry. So thank you, Rachel, and also thank you tonight for helping with the filming of the board meeting. So we have ladies in film back here, so thank you.
Very nice. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We'll let you get back to your other stuff. Okay, you're good? Okay, and then I have one, I can come back to my board report? So just really quickly, I have just another small announcement. Tonight, we're going to be welcoming a new board member. She's not official yet, but she's very close. We're almost there. Last week, the Board of Education held interviews to fill the remainder of our former board president and member, Deb Lindthor's term. We were very impressed with the applicants. We had six interviews that night, and it was not an easy decision. They all came with a wealth of expertise, just a commitment to bring the voice of the community to us. And Dr. Lilston, you just, you know, you just impressed us all so much, even though it was a hard decision, I think we all had a consensus that you were our top choice. So we're so glad that you're here to join us. Dr. Lilston currently serves as Director of Applied Research and Evaluation for the New Jersey Department of Children and Families, DCF. She has extensive experience in both social services and public health, and she really has a strong, strong commitment to mental health for our community and access to resources that we know will be great for the district. And just your sense of advocacy for families and children will be a welcome part of our board, so welcome to the board. And to all the others, we were very impressed with you. Board elections are coming up soon. We hope that you keep that interest and that you come back because we could have had any of you on the board, and you would have all been great assets. So thank you and welcome aboard.
So, as you know, I'm Andrea Driver, the Vice President, and sitting in for Anita, who has sent a note for me to share with you all. So she's, this is from Anita. Hello? Better? Okay. So, "Good evening. Thank you all for staying engaged and present as we seat your 2023 School Board Officers in interview for our open seat, but we have a few administrative..." This is not what she sent to me. Hang tight. No, that's it. Try again. No, that is really what she said. It just sounds exactly the same as yours. But that's okay. I'll read it anyway. It's on her behalf. We have a few administrative tasks to complete that process. I do want to welcome Dr. Pamela Lilstone. Lilstone?
Liliston.
Liliston, as the community member who will be filling that seat. I also want to take a few moments to acknowledge and thank the seven members of the community that threw their hat in the ring for this opportunity. We're very fortunate to have a bountiful pool of candidates, and we want to encourage them all to run an upcoming November election cycle to fill the final year of the open position. As we have continued to do the work of the board, it's important to thank the Hopewell Township Committee and the administration for the early and critical work related to planning for our growing community. We are all committed to a plan that sets us all up for welcoming growth and strengthening what is already excellent about our school district. So again, that is from Anita, our President. And we are going to move on to the School Board, that it is School Board Recognition Month. Yay. A resolution?
So there's going to be a resolution the board's going to do.
I don't know what you're saying.
Acknowledging all the hard work that members of our school board do each and every year. January is School Board Recognition Month. So what we'd like right now is a motion and a second to resolve that the board approved the attached resolution acknowledging January is School Board Recognition Month.
Do you want me to do the motion first?
We, well, yeah, move it to motion.
So can I have a motion for the resolution?
Motion.
Thank you. And so the resolution of the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education, School Board Recognition Month, January 2023. Whereas, the New Jersey School Boards Association has declared January 2023 to be School Board Recognition Month, a time when all residents can acknowledge the contributions made by our local school board members. And whereas, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education is one of 581 local school boards in New Jersey, which sets policies and oversees operations for public school districts. And whereas, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education embraces the goal of high-quality education for all New Jersey public school students. And whereas, New Jersey's local school boards help determine the educational goals for approximately 1.4 million children in pre-kindergarten through 12th grade. And whereas, New Jersey's 5,000 local school board members who receive no remu- remuneration for their services act as advocates for public school students as they work with administrators, teachers, and parents for the betterment of public education. And whereas, school boards strive to provide the resources necessary to meet the needs of all students, including those with special needs. And whereas, boards of education provide accountability to the public. They communicate the needs of the school district to the public, and they convey to school administrators the public's expectations for the schools. And whereas, New Jersey can take pride in its schools, which rank among the nation's best in key achievement indicators such as the National Assessment of Educational Progress scores and the preparation for college through advanced placement offerings and SAT assessments. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education does hereby recognize the services of local school board members throughout New Jersey as we join communities statewide in observing January 2023 as School Board Recognition Month. And be it further resolved that the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education urges all New Jersey citizens to work with their local boards of education and public school staffs toward the advancement of our children's education. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. All right. On to the next thing. We have a Start Strong presentation in progress. Ms. Vicky, please. Bob, can you? All right.
Okay, so I'm here to present the, this fall's Start Strong results. So I'm going to give a little bit of the background on the Start Strong test, then review the data for elementary and secondary, and then talk about next steps that we as a district are planning. Okay, so just some background on Start Strong. In terms of the administration of the test, it is for grades four through 10 for ELA. For math, it's grades four through eight, as well as Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry. And then there is, science is assessed three times in grade six, grades nine, and grades 12. And so the scoring of the assessment is in three different categories. It's scored as less support needed, some support needed, and strong support needed. And just a couple of things to note about the actual assessment. It is actually assessing the previous year's standards. So for example, if I was in grade six math, the Start Strong assessment is actually assessing my grade five math standard knowledge. And just in terms of the administration of the assessment, it's about 60 minutes, and there's only 10 questions. So as I'm presenting the data, I just want you to have that in mind, that this is not a comprehensive test as well, like as compared to NJSLA. It's an hour, 10-question assessment. Okay, so a little bit about the elementary review. So how I've organized the data is I've compared our scores from this year and compared them to last year's Start Strong results. Unfortunately, we have no barometer to compare how our scores are doing as compared to the students in the rest of the state because that information has not been released to us by the DOE. So this is kind of not in the context of the bigger picture, so I just wanted to give us some comparison. So I've arranged it according to 21 and 22 data, and then 22 data. So I'm going to start talking about grade four. So you can see for ELA, grade four, overall, the students seem to do a little better this year than in the past year. In terms of math, grade four, again, the students seem to do slightly better in 2022 than they did in 2021. And I'm basing that all on the less support needed data. For grade five ELA, again, they're following the same trend, that students seem to do slightly better in 2022 than in 2021. And then for grade five math, again, it followed the same trends. So overall, in elementary, no, no, no. Students seem to be trending upwards in that they need less support in the standards assessed as compared to the previous year. Additionally, the students seem to need less support in ELA versus math in both grades four and five. So overall, that's elementary, it looks like it's trending upwards. So now we're going to transition to secondary results. Thank you. So I have it arranged according to buildings, so I'm going to first discuss the results of Timber Lane. Okay, thank you. So for grade six and seven ELA, there's not much change, but students tended to score a bit higher last year. For grade eight, it followed the same pattern. Again, students tended to perform slightly better in 2021. In terms of mathematics, grades six and seven, similar trends as in ELA. Grade six did a little bit better this year, but grade seven, they, they needed less support slightly in grade, in 2021. And then finally, in grade eight, which followed the same patterns as grades seven, where the students seemed to perform slightly better last year. So we also have students at the middle school who are enrolled in Algebra I and Geometry, so they took those subsequent Start Strong assessments, and we're following, I'm going to, the same pattern, that students perform minimally better in 2021. And so as I mentioned at the start of this presentation, science is assessed three times, so in grade six, these are the results from last year compared to this year, and we're following the same pattern, where students seem to be slightly, doing, scoring slightly higher last year. So overall, students scored better in 2021 than they did in 2022 at the middle school. So for Central High School. Thank you. So for ELA, grades nine and 10, students in grade nine seem to perform better in this school year as compared to students in grade 10 who seem to perform slightly better in 2021. Algebra I, students did perform better this year than they had in last year, but geometry followed the same patterns, slightly better last year, but some of these percentages are so close that sometimes it's a bit negligible in terms of the performance. And then finally, in Algebra II, students seem to score higher in 2021. So these were the last two assessments, grades that were assessed in science, and I feel like a broken record a little bit, but students seem to perform slightly better on this assessment in both grades last year than they did as compared to this year. So students seem to perform better in 2021, excluding certain score, certain assessments like ELA grade nine and Algebra I. However, as I noted, some of the changes are so minimal that it was, it could be negligible for some of the assessments in terms of the percentage differences. Okay, so next step, so what are we doing with this data as, at the district level? So there's kind of three different areas we're focusing on. One of the areas we're looking at is we're taking a closer look at the standards from the assessment, and as I said, there's only 10 questions in this assessment. So when you're looking at the data, not all the, not all the standards from that previous grade are assessed, it's just 10 random standards that are selected. So the supervisors and I, and our, took a closer look at the performance for each assessment as it related to the standards. We articulated this with the teachers as for areas that could, could be areas to focus on in class, and we're also looking at aligning our curriculum to make sure that those standards are addressed appropriately within the curriculum. Additionally, especially, we at the middle school have these new literacy core classes that are, we're focusing on ELA standards in grade six through eight in all subject areas. So we're really taking a deeper dive in the informational tech standards because that was an idea, an area that we noticed that students tend to struggle with, the nonfiction components. We are also looking at just bringing in more diagnostics to see where students are in terms of their learning. So through grant funds, we were able to purchase platforms that provided data of students' performance by standards. So those were included Lexia, iReady, and iXL. And then finally, we're just looking deeper into the data, especially at the elementary level, we recently purchased a platform called Linkit, which we can input students' scores on different assessments by standard, and so then we're able to hone in on what standards the students tend to be struggling with, as well as group students according to the standards or how they're doing. So we're creating more better, more rigorous profiles of the students at the elementary level. Thank you. Any, any questions?
Yeah, Vicky, I guess the main thing I'd ask here is like, what is the intention from the state on how this relates to NJSLA? Is this more intended to be like an assessment of like long-term retention after the summer? That type of thing?
Yeah, it's more, my, my understanding from this, my conversations with the state is that it's more of a, like a, a pre-assessment for where students are in their, in their learning that we can use as a district or at the teaching level to identify what standards we need to cover. The unfortunate thing is, you know, it's administered like late September, early October, we don't get the scores until December. So by that time, we're like halfway through the year. Yeah.
So that's why it's very important for us to have our own assessment, and then it's not comprehensive, right? This is just a sort of, after COVID, after kids coming out, you know, can we, what learning loss can we determine that everyone's given the same test? So that's why the Start Strong, but we all have, have decided we have to get our own platform so we can really do deep dives and work with them.
I think just overall, I'd agree with you that like small percentage changes when you've got 10 questions.
I know.
Clearly, that can be like how a question is written.
Right. Exactly. Yeah.
Yeah, just if you have a big trend, big difference, that might be.
That's, that's, yeah, exactly.
So is, do we think, or has the state indicated, is this test here to stay for a couple of years, or is it?
We thought it was gone last year, and then we found out like in the summer it was back. So we have no idea.
Okay.
I'm loud enough. When the state...
When the state pushes this out and they say, hey, here's a great test for you, the districts to use in your assessment, do they ever, do they provide a means of feedback for us to say it's actually useless? Because by the time, A, it's only 10 questions and B, by the time we get the results, middle of the year, a test that is supposed to monitor learning laws during the summer is kind of pointless. I mean.
I mean, they don't really specifically ever ask for our feedback on, on assessments. I mean, I'm, I know we can write in and share our concerns and the community can share their concerns. I'm not sure where those concerns go with that.
So, so I don't know where they would go, but if they go anywhere but a trash bin, you know, I would personally say I am slightly concerned about proliferation of this type of testing. And just the amount of time that it takes away for, that kids could be in class actually learning something.
Yeah, yeah.
And I get one assessment a year. The, the state needs to know how the districts are doing. But when you've gone beyond one, it seems a little silly.
And we found better data or more telling data when we've done some of the diagnos, like our iReady, we found like it pinpointed where the kids were at like what grade levels in math they were. And that is just, it's just stronger data.
Yeah, I would agree with that. My uneducated opinion on education is this, like NJSLA, right? That's designed to see if the district overall is doing acceptably. I don't ever view that when my kids take it as an assessment of how the kids are doing. That's something that the teachers have to do in a classroom. Right, so I would totally agree with that, which is why having more than one a year seems really wasteful. And if there is a way to feed that back, I would.
The superintendent has it. And we've been sharing that, you know. The time that it takes, you know, the resources, the human resources around the assessment that really doesn't give us the snapshot that we'd like is really not helpful. So I thought we almost got it off the table last year. I think they're listening to us.
Just a little question. Is there any, do we collect any kind of other data that, that would sort of help us validate the results from this thing?
I mean, some, some of the data that were you, like especially at the elementary level, we, they are, we can pinpoint certain standards with this, and we could correlate it with the Start Strong data if we, if we like. Because with the Linkit program, we can input the Start Strong data as well as the NJSLA data and then compare it to our benchmark data. So we do kind of triangulate it in that way.
So when, if there is a chance to give feedback, especially Dr. Trese, when you have the superintendent meeting, would that be to tell the state that we don't want this test, but a better test that's maybe more than 10 question, more reliable? Or the feedback is we don't want any?
Well, the feedback we've been providing has been the frequency of, remember when they first pulled out the park and the NJSLA was supposed to be given four times a year? And then, you know, I think it was even six, and then it went to four, and then it went to two. And then we got to the point where it was the spring administration. And, you know, with the high school, it happens twice a year, right? This really is, Start Strong really came about because of COVID and some of the other federal monies we received, the state monies we received, and needing to have some sort of accountability with that. I don't know why, they just didn't use the NJSLA that the Start Strong became the vehicle for it. So I don't see it as something that's going to be long-term. However, we do want good data from the state, right? But we do want it in a timely manner where it's usable. So in that, that's not going to happen because it just takes the, by the time they mobilize, they're not a test, implement, score it, it's well into the school year before we get that information. So it's a great autopsy to see, oh, what a shame happened last year. But we need our own systems to really stay on top of what's going on currently. Like you said, the teachers on the ground are really, that's for them to see how we're doing. But we need our own really good assessments, you know, to see how we're doing on a daily basis.
Right, yeah, I would, I would say for the data, for the results to be useful is actually two layers. The timeliness of the results and the accuracy of the data. Because we don't want anything that's misleading, right?
Right, exactly.
Well, as long as we're bashing the state, I'll chime in on that. No, no, just from the standpoint of like NJSLA. I mean, the fact, you know, if, if you're looking for additional data, we got the NJSLA results in October, November. They were presented the board in November. So the thing is, you know, you're a quarter of the way into the school year when the useful time to get at least the initial information in terms of how students did versus a particular standard, if you got that to the district in early summer, then you'd actually have some time to be able to modify your lesson plans, modify your curriculum to address it. And it's way too late, you know, it's ridiculous. In my opinion, College Board is not the best-run organization in the world, but they can get results within six weeks. So I'm not asking for the full report, but sure, they should be able to tie questions to standards and give the data to the districts within up two months.
And not for nothing, but there's the other, like besides the state, there's plenty of other resources that we use that can give, you know, data, right, results right away. You know, based on the standards even. So it's not, you know, and I, I know as a district, we have those, we have those things. So even, even though we're additionally testing the students, it's much quicker and, and the results, you get them back so much faster.
Exactly.
But those assessments are in real time, right? You could have a teacher delivering a benchmark or even, you know, a pre-assessment at the beginning of class. And I've seen them do this. And then right then, divide kids into groups and decide what, who needs what, who has it already, who can move ahead, who's ready, who needs remediation, and set up their learning stations accordingly. So we have that, that ability now. And we do have the ability to warehouse all the data and, and try to compare across the different assessments, what story is it telling us about this kiddo? So it's valuable, but you know, again, we know what, you know, we know where we can use Start Strong versus those more diagnostic tools we have on a daily basis that we use in class.
All right, thank you, thank you, Vicki. All right, and now we're going to move on to a budget discussion. Mr. Colavita?
Preliminary.
Preliminary budget discussion.
Okay, so we're in, the board and I and the board are going to be getting involved in heavy budget discussions starting now and moving into March when we are ready to strike a tentative budget. As we always like to start here in the district, we start with our mission statement as our guiding motto towards everything we do. We always like to include it in the beginning. This is where we've been and where we're going over the next several months. We started in September where we discussed CNI, moving on to special ed facilities. And now we're in the process of meeting with all of our internal budget leaders to see where they are with budget. Dr. Plitzus has met with all of her folks at the curriculum level. Paulette's meeting with her folks. I'm meeting with transportation facilities, technology to all, describe all of the different details that go into making up our budget. The board will be meeting on the sixth again to start to dig deeper into where we are. The second, we'll get notification of our state aid, which I'll get on my still box about the state. We, this would be nice to have in the beginning and not the middle, nor toward the end of the process when you're getting a $4.5 million piece of your budget. Two weeks before you have to submit, which is the 13th of March, we'll approve a tentative budget. I have until the 20th to submit it to the county office for them to make any changes. And we will have a final hearing and adoption on the 24th of April. That just kind of gives us a synopsis of where we're going to be going over the next, over the winter into the spring. So some quick facts about Hopewell. We have about 3,500 students, give or take, right now. We transport 3,000 of those students in some form each day. We have eight buildings, six schools, admin building here. And we have a maintenance transportation facility behind this building. 431 teaching staff and 272 additional staff members support those 3,500 students. We have 24 administrators. And while not currently an actual state guideline, we are an I district, which is considered to be the second wealthiest in the state. J is actually the highest. But that's a snapshot of the, of district demographics right now. What makes us unique? Sometimes people say, why are our per pupil costs so high? I like to sugarcoat it and say, why are we unique? We have small schools. Our schools very seldom eclipse 400 students. We have neighboring schools in West Windsor and Montgomery that have class, or buildings of 800 plus, even 1,000 plus students in an elementary or middle school or upper elementary. We have a great number of student programs, opportunities, and services that we provide to both staff and students each and every day. Highly experienced staff, SEL and mental health supports, and programs that significantly exceed state minimums. We are one of the few comprehensive high schools left in the state, which means we encompass everything from the arts to lab sciences, to mechanical drawing rooms, to business classes, dance classes. Anything and everything that you can think of is included in our curriculum. Again, these are some of the things that we value. Opportunities, we have enormous amount of opportunities for our students, both curricular and extracurricular. We work on developing the whole child and supporting our staff, making sure that they are properly trained and also giving them the opportunity for exploration. The district, again, long-term planning, we like to, to plan for our future in many different ways, not only academics and staff, but also to our facilities and in, in our community advocacy with the committees that we have. Again, just a visual image of what we do with our kids. We have kids going to college. We have kids doing the arts, wood shops, car shops, and athletics, as well as regular education or regular classroom instruction. Various ways we look, we look to our scores, our SAT scores, our, the quality and success of our extracurricular programs, the colleges that our kids get into, climate surveys that's come from the superintendent's office to seek, to get a gauge on just how well we're doing in both community, folks, and with our students. And again, too many things to, to go through, return our investment with the things that our kids are involved in. And one of the things I'd like to highlight is that over 80% of our students participate in something at the high school or middle school, whether it be a play, a club, a committee, a sport. Our kids are staying after school to do, to participate in their, in their education. So again, just a plethora of things that our kids are doing. We also play a role in our community. We're, we're the first ones to volunteer. Again, we saw the great video on the food pantry. Our, our staff is highly involved in that. Our vaccine clinics, testing, healthy communities, healthy youth, which gets our students involved with our, members of our community on a regular basis, equity programs. All part of the role we play within the community that we take on with much pride. All that leads into what we value and how we're going to try to develop this budget. We want our budget to develop our values first and foremost. Our, the things that we put into our budget is the things that our community and our board values. We want to maintain all the programs, the excellent programming and services we've already implemented. We want to continue with that rigorous athletic, that academic program. Continue to maintain our curriculum and to improve it and upgrade it as necessary. Class sizes have become very important in our district. And they're much lower than other surrounding districts. We've made commitments this year to our collective bargaining groups to make sure that they're paid commensurate with their experience and their, their neighboring districts. We're going to continue to evaluate the programs that we have based upon enrollment. Things that are underserved, we're going to try to eliminate, not eliminate, but you know, scale back. Things that are underserved, we're going to try to put more into those so that the kids have the opportunity to take the classes that they want. Again, developing a budget for a future that we don't know of. All the things that, a lot of the things that happened to us this year, we could not have predicted with a, with a war happening in Eastern Europe, gas prices, all of those things. Were not part of our priority list last year when we developed the budget. Unforeseen circumstances that we've had to pivot and adapt to. Some of the things that we're considering right now that are becoming major drivers in this year's budget, the cost for energy and fuel have skyrocketed. Transportation, bus renewals, driver shortages, fuel increases. We were given a memo by the state this year that transportation, the CPI index, which is the driver for contract renewals, is at 5.86% this year. That is what the state has established as the, what they expect us to be able to increase those contracts by. Insurance has become increasingly volatile, both property and casualty insurance, which includes workers' comp, but also our health, our self-insured health benefits program. While it's continuing to, to save us money, the inflation that's hit the medical, the medical environment right now is unprecedented. Our unanticipated facility and maintenance issues. Our facilities committee and the board as a whole has been informed over the last several years of just things that are breaking that we didn't anticipate. Certain things such as sewer pits and well pumps that we wouldn't have anticipated needing to repair that weren't on our radar have failed and need to be replaced. And those are the kinds of things that you can't open school if they aren't functioning. Special education and rising tuition from our out-of-district providers continue to increase their tuitions at greater than 10%. Staffing and contract settlements, again, trying to keep our staffs on par with other districts. Curriculum initiatives, again, being driven not only by us, but by the state, who implemented areas where they feel that we should be working on. Anticipated growth in Hopewell Township is again, something new. We're anticipating several new developments that we should start seeing students from in the next two, three years. We also have, to help address these concerns, the board does have a bank cap of $268,000 that could be put towards balancing our budget. We may need a waiver, consider a waiver for health benefit costs that are exceeding greater than anticipated. And also to considering how we will utilize some of our surplus to balance our budget. All areas of consideration for expense and also revenue that we're working on to balance our budget this year. Just to kind of show where we are in enrollment. Back in 2010, 11, we were at a high in first grade class with about 270 students. And we saw that considerably drop off for 10-plus years. For the first time, we're starting to see two consecutive years of growth in our first grade enrollment. It's an indicator, first grades typically use it as an indicator towards growth for the rest of those. It takes, it takes out of consideration students going to private kindergartens. But we start to see that trend line rising in our schools as opposed to dropping as they were for so many years. And again, this is the overall enrollment, again, seeing two consecutive years of growth coming back to our schools. And just to give folks an idea, this is this year's current budget. But where, where does our money go? The big numbers go in general education, special education, staff benefits. And you can see by putting those three pieces of the puzzle together, it's greater than 75% of our total budget. All those things are, are part of our program and have very little flexibility to them. Transportation, again, is another high-ticket item basically driven by statute and not much we can do there. Operations and maintenance are all those things that we need to do to keep our buildings serviced by our, our custodial maintenance staff, our energy bills. All of that goes to incorporate another 7.5% of our budget, again, with very little flexibility to edit it, to edit. Those last smaller pieces of the pie, again, necessary on things that we have very little control over. Debt service is, is 4.4% of our budget. That's our mortgage. Essentially, we've set that mortgage for the next 25 years. As you can see, the vast majority of our money goes to the education of our students. That's what we do. And it, to our dismay, sometimes it's very hard to control those costs and reduce those costs because they're so heavily driven into, with, with staff and the education of our students. Where do we get the money to pay for? We're very heavily driven by local funding. Okay, and local funding comes in three pieces. Property taxes, which is 88% of our budget. 1% of our budget is monies that we can generate through our own doing, through tuitions that we charge outside students to attend here, fees for transportation that we charge our students who live outside of statutory zones. And the use of our facilities by other outside groups are able to generate revenues to the district to offset taxes. groups are able to generate revenues to the district to offset taxes. And the use of surplus at 4% of our budget. That's using savings to help pay for recurring costs. 93% of our budget is locally funded. 6% of our funding comes from the state. Less than 1% of our funding is federal funding, and it comes in the forms of entitlement grants, both IDEA, which is about $800,000 worth of money that we use to pay for special education tuitions, that's what it's designed for, and our title grants, Title 1, 2, 3, and 4, which are, again, entitlement funds used for specific purposes, from, from professional development to drug and alcohol, counseling, and service, ESL, and then monies for our most needy students, our Title 1 students for, I'm not sure the term, that's not enrichment, but it's, yeah, support, support and remediation for that. That's money in, money out. Okay? What have we done over the years to control costs? We've tried to do everything we possibly can to reduce the burden on those regular items that come back and forth. Health benefits, we have been self-insured now for four years. What that does is it allows us to simply pay the claims on our medical bills. We don't pay premiums that go, if there's anything left over, it doesn't go to the insurance company, it stays with the district, and it helps us control costs over the long term. In periods of inflation like this, medical inflation, it tends to tax that kind of a plan, but we do have, we do have methods in place to control that. Special education, again, we do everything we can to return our students to our home environment. The least restrictive environment is what is mandated and what we truly believe in. We feel that we can do a better job, in most cases, educating students in our own facility. We've, we've tried to reduce staff when we can. We try to keep our class sizes to a respectable level, but we have been able to reduce staff sections over the years when we've had declining enrollment. Now that our enrollment is tending to, seems to be leveling off and could possibly be increasing over the next three to four years, we may have to look at that again to add staff back. We've also tried to do the best we can to reduce administration in an era of increasing administrative demand from the state. We participate in the school choice program, which adds, allows us to bring in students from other districts to the open seats that we have and brings in revenue from the state regarding that. Technology, again, anybody who is living in this world today knows that technology is influencing everything that we do, from our phones to our cars to our appliances, believe it or not. Your appliances sometimes can't run unless they're connected to Bluetooth. We have moved to a single platform in an effort to be more cost-containing. We've moved to a Google environment and away from a more costly Microsoft environment. And we're trying to virtualize servers whenever we can in an effort to reduce costs. But again, technology is something that continues to creep into everything that we do. And energy, energy has been a buzzword this year. We do cooperatively bid our electric and gas service, which with over 300 districts from around the state in an effort to bring better prices to the district. And we have noticed that some of the higher efficiencies, things that we've done in all of our buildings, from AC to heating, cooling, we've seen a reduction. Even our windows have shown a reduction in the amount of energy that we've had to use. So that has helped counteract the cost of energy. Again, if we were to look for further reductions, right now, we are looking to balance our budget. We are not balanced at this point. We have more expenditures than identified revenues right now. We are, will be looking to reduce our, we have to reduce our repair and improvement bill, things that we might wanted to improve, we may have to kick down the road a few more years. Things such as carpet replacements and floor replacements, ceiling tiles, those kinds of things would have to be pushed out. We're doing an evaluation of all of our special and elective offerings at the high school. You know, we, we offer a great deal of language courses and business courses, fine arts, all of those kinds of things are being examined for enrollment. Our co-curricular activities, we're looking at, you know, do we continue to maintain sports teams at the freshman level, middle school level? Again, we're looking at everything. Our administrators, teachers, and support staff, are there areas to make economization and reduce staff further? We are definitely having to look at increased class sizes over the next few years with the influx of enrollment and the limited spaces that we have, as we have changed the way our buildings looked from 15 years ago when Stony Brook opened. And we've added things, we've added all kinds of special classes, we've added full-day kindergarten that has taken up our spaces. We have planned safety and security upgrades as, as our world trends towards that way. We have constant requests for additional door swipes and security upgrades to allow folks to access the building in a safer way. And again, planned technology upgrades, as much as we hate to see it, as soon as you put that technology in their classroom, somebody is trying something else new as soon as that stuff gets to the desk. So we do the best we can with stretching technology as much as we can. We take old computers and old Chromebooks and we cannibalize them, and we take parts until there's nothing but a shell left. And you think I'm joking, but we, we have a great staff who can take, you know, the pieces of a computer and put them, put them back together. Again, takes us to the end of that. But again, just an initial pass of what we're doing as a board and as an administrative team to get prepared for the budget crisis that's going to come up in February and March. Take any questions now from members of the board?
Bob?
Yeah?
There was one thing that was mentioned in your slide somewhere halfway that I didn't fully understand, and it said applying for a health benefits waiver. What is that?
So the state, the state establishes a, a norm, for lack of a better word, of what they believe that health benefit costs should go up. And it's typically based upon the increase that is set by the New Jersey State Health Benefits Program. And whatever that number is, if your health benefit costs go higher, go higher than that, there's a wave, there's a waiver for it. So for example, your estimated, say the limit is 4% and yours goes up 8%, you can increase your budget and get a waiver for the difference between 4 and 8 to help close the gap.
It will, it would allow us, so what you're saying is it allows us to go beyond the budget cap that would otherwise?
Right. It would allow you to go above the budget cap.
And we, and so does that mean that we're expecting our health benefit costs to go up so much?
I don't, I don't know what the limit is. Last year, so last year, there was no waiver.
Okay.
Because the state, we were under what the state increase was. So we didn't qualify for it. And again, ours, we don't have a premium, we don't pay a premium to a carrier. We estimate based upon a historical trends and also an actuary, what we think our spend will be next year, and that's what we'll, we'll base it upon. But our spend has increased to where we're right at what we budgeted. So if we're at what we budgeted now, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to come up with an increase. We've been blessed the last four years that we haven't had to increase our health benefit line item at all. We've kept it flat, but we're running into a wall now because of this, this medical inflation that we're seeing. And post-COVID, we're seeing folks actually going back to the doctors to get treatment.
So that's what I was going to follow up on, Bob. When we wound up reviewing the trends in the past in finance and facilities, one of the difficulties you had was it felt like this year we're at a point with COVID where people who had deferred certain things, procedures, et cetera, were, were going ahead and getting them done. So I guess my question is, do we know enough about that, that we're, we're able to account for that in our next year's budgeting, or is that something that's going to confound what we do?
No, we're, this is, this is a, this is a healthy year. They're back. Not only are folks back using, utilizing their surfaces, which is what they're supposed to do with them, but there's, the inflation in the medical field is also driving that. So while we, while we're budgeted, we're, we're pretty good right now. I'm hoping on, I'm hoping on some positive months. We were high over the summer in about $1.7 million a month, but it's dropped to about $1.35 per month. So if that trend continues, we should be okay for this year. But next year, I'm anticipating, you know, an increase. We're not going to be able to be flat. Again, that's what saved us the last couple of years in that. So if that, if, you know, depending on everything else that falls in, as we start to prepare the budget, we determine what, if anything, a waiver would be, that's, the board would have to make a decision as to whether or not they're going to utilize that waiver. But as everything we've seen going through, all of these items on this slide are increasing, you know, again, I, I am going to negotiate hard with our transportation carrier, and I've been in contact with Princeton, who has the same carrier. You can, you can accept the 5.8% increase, you could challenge them on it, and they could withdraw. And then we'd go to bid, and we never know what we're going to get. You know, last year, the increase was like 12% when we thought we were going to get a 1.91% increase. Again, all this happened before that war happened. Once the war hit, they all pulled their contracts back. Again, you know, gasoline prices were going over close to $5 a gallon. So the, the things that are driving, there's nothing extraordinary in our budget this year. It's the, the effective inflation that's driving everything.
I did have one other question for you. When you talked about an anticipation for class sizes increasing in the next couple of years, is that relative to where we are now, or is it at the point where it would start to affect what the board has established as its target class size?
That's a good question. Right now, you were jumping there for a second.
I was going to say, right now, we're well under what the board has established as our, as our max class size, which I believe is 25.
It's 21 to 23 and 23 to 25. So lower elementary, 21 to 23, everything over third grade is like 23 to 25. So many of our elementary classes are in the teens. Some are in the low twenties. We have nothing in the area of 25. Secondary, I'm not sure, I don't see Trish anymore.
Couple at that size, at the high school. In the middle school, we might have some larger class sizes. Usually the upper-level classes get, you know, get a little fuller.
Right. But you know, what we're looking for right now, and we're doing an analysis of homerooms, elementary homerooms, and seeing where to start there, and moving towards getting everything over 20 where we, where we can in anticipation of this, but also doing a deep dive at the elementary, not the, the middle and the high school to see what electives may be able to bind, eliminated. We did that exercise several years ago through a program. So again, a similar dive, but also looking into non, and you talked about that earlier today, the non-homeroom scheduling. And making sure that those are effectively scheduled and not, you know, making sure that everybody has a full load, full schedule in those areas because there can be savings found there, and that wouldn't affect class size as much, but it's how we provide the service. And you know, from what I'm learning from these fine folks over here is that how you structure your schedule can yield dividends towards savings that you might not think of.
Yeah. Bob, I, I have a question. It may not be related to the budget side. One of your slides, you had the Chinese language program was added for grade six to eight?
Oh, yeah, we're going to need to update that. We're facing that one out.
It's going to be nine as well.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought because I, I was like, I, I don't think that there is a Chinese program.
Yes, and that was something that we had to eliminate, not so much for, for budget, though we would have revisited it. It was even finding a teacher to teach that. And so it was just, it was just finding a part-time teacher to take that on was impossible. Finding a full-time Chinese teacher is very difficult.
I asked Vicki to change that.
Yeah, so we have to.
That was quick.
We're going to fix it. Thank you for catching that. But long story short, this is going to be a heavy lift. We normally, finance and facility would be talking about items related to our budget throughout the year. We do come out of the, the committee structure for budget discussions, and we do that as a board of the whole because it, it is an important discussion to have. This is going to be a tough year, and this is not the only district that is struggling. We're all facing this in our homes. I don't know about you, the bills are going up, our, our money's not coming, growing in our, in our, you know, our, our bank accounts, but bills are coming in higher and higher, groceries are higher, you know, fuel, energy costs are higher, everything. Our teachers were given raises recently, and quite frankly, these weren't extraordinary raises. This was just bringing them on par with some of our neighboring districts. We're still not, we're not the top-paid teachers certainly, but just bringing them to where they should be. All of the superintendents are struggling, and so again, are we saying something to the, to the big house downtown? Absolutely. We're all saying, we are all struggling to balance our budgets, and we are looking for some relief from the state. So we continue to reach out beyond us, just like, you know, there's a lot on us, there's a lot on the community, and we're really doing whatever we can to try to eliminate that, but to maintain the programs that we become to value and quite frankly, what are important to this community. So we'll continue to fight and have these discussions, but we really don't want this to impact our kids, so we're trying to keep this from hurting our kiddos.
Again, the, you know, the thing I mentioned earlier, it'd be nice if we had the state, I have an, I haven't factored in an increase from the state yet in, in state aid as we've received the last several years, and I'm hoping, there's talk of a inflationary adjustment this year, but we have, they have, they're being tight-lipped about that right now. That would help. That would help.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Colavita. And we'll move on to any items of old business. Do you have any of that? No? I don't think so either. So then we'll move on to our first public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a further meeting, future meeting, so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Public comment is now open. Do we have a timer?
Adam's got it.
Thank you.
Is there a timer? Just so I know.
Adam's got it.
Okay. So Keet Ham, Pennington. I wanted to first thank you, Rachel, for putting together the video regarding the Hopewell Valley Food Pantry. I know that the community and many of our students and families have been involved in donating, volunteering their time, so on and so forth. We've heard it loud and clear this evening that there are so many amongst our community who are struggling over these last few years. Looking, Mr. Colavita, in your presentation stating that Hopewell is, I believe, an I, which would be the second wealthiest district here. One of the things that I would like to address, some of you who may not know who I am, I previously sat on a key communicators committee when Dr. Smith was here regarding some communication issues and issues that parents had in the district that they didn't bring forth or that were cumulative. And one of the things that I've been hearing recently is about our population of students who are free and reduced, who do not receive lunch or anything on half-days. Those half-days before Thanksgiving, it's an entire week or four days before Thanksgiving, some students depend on that meal. And some of our young ones who are in elementary school are then there for extended care and are then forced to pack lunches from home, which is a financial burden, especially these days, on those families. The response I got regarding why our students cannot receive meals, even if it was a pack-to-go to send with them, is that there are three things that have to be considered by state and federal guidelines. One is that meals cannot be claimed unless they are served the same day within that meal period, so they can't pick it up the day before or the following day. So I know during COVID, that was a little different because students were on alternating schedules, so they were able to get two meals one day because they weren't in person except every other day. The second one is that the meals have to be eaten on-site, and the third is that the meals need to be made available to all students. So I would ask while you guys are coming up with your budget for next year to see if you can find some way, I know that it's a small population, but the district that I work in and any of my family or friends work in, they offer lunch for their students even on half-days. their students even on half-days, so that the free and reduced students are able to obtain the meals that they qualify for. So I would ask that this district take into consideration, working with the state, trying to figure out what parameters there are to provide for our students who are receiving free and reduced.
Thank you, Ms. Ham. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Seeing none.
And Mrs. Ham, thank you for your comment. And we will continue to look and see what we can do. A lot of these surrounding schools do get a lot more money for free and reduced lunch, and they have other resources we don't have. But absolutely, if, if you're hearing, you're bringing that voice from the community, we'll dig into it and see what we can do.
Just to, to further up on that, I, I think I was the one who gave that to Ms. Riley, who gave it to you. That, we, we can serve on half-days, it's just always been part of the schedule that we haven't. We can serve. The rules that allowed us to send lunches home were COVID rules, and they're, they've been expired. So we couldn't, we couldn't send meals home over a Thanksgiving weekend. We could serve meals on half-days, students, and have students eat in school. That's, I think that's the limit to it. The days of being able to send, you know, the weekend's worth of meals home and things like that, that was a COVID thing, that was a waiver that the, the Department of Agriculture did. They would have to do that again for us to be able to implement that. Well, it'd be the administration, the high school administration. Actually, all our principals, because I don't think we, do we serve at the middle, elementary schools? Half-day, no?
Yeah, we have to talk to the principals.
To do it at AC, next AC.
We'd have to do it for all students. I don't want to kind of sink this down.
Right, right. But you have, you'd have to serve lunch.
Right.
Yeah. No, no, it, but it would be a scheduling issue on those days.
Just scheduling, was it?
Yes.
So I'm gonna officially close public comment. We didn't get to do that. So public comment is now closed, and we will move on to the consent agenda. So we need a motion to, to approve the consent agenda, consent agenda. All those marked with an asterisk.
Uh, motion?
Second.
Is there anyone who would like to discuss any of the items that are on the consent agenda? Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any notes, abstentions? Motion carries then. All right. So we will move on to our committees, our committee report. We're gonna start with finance and facilities. Adam, all right.
Okay, so finance and facilities had its first meeting of the year last Tuesday. All the items on our agenda tonight were on consent, but I'll just highlight a couple of things. We just approved the capital project certificate of substantial completion for the Bear Tavern and Timber Lane Boiler Project, so that's a good, good state. Just to clarify, we had a good discussion, it was our first meeting, so a lot of it was terminology that we talked about. So substantial completion means we're not done. It's about 90% of the work has been complete, it's just we've got everything down to the punch list now. And, you know, we still have to do that, we still have to get inspections done, but it means we're making very good progress.
A lot of times substantial completion means more to the contractor than it does to us. It means that they get a certain amount of money.
Yep. We also had some favorable change orders in some of the things that we've contracted out, including one, basically coming back into our capital reserve over $127,000, so that's good. Basically, we reflect places where we've allocated some funds to cover for contingencies, and we didn't realize any contingencies. Let's see, we're still working toward getting our annual audit completed. We are waiting for a pension liabilities footnote from the state. We anticipate having our auditors come and provide the results to us in February. Preliminary indications are it's, it's favorable. As usual, we found, you know, there's always a couple of things that seem to be related to, like student activities and stuff, which is, seems to be a recurring theme. And then we got some updates on our other outstanding facilities work. The main thing I'll point out there is that we've got, as Bob had mentioned, some, in terms of our planning, some unforeseen things occur. We had an issue with our HVAC system at Stony Brook, so we've gotten money that came, actually came from COVID time period, and we're getting that going in. And a lot of work has been completed, but again, we're, we're working towards that. So talked about a little bit of an update in terms of some of the planned projects coming up in the future, boiler chillers at, at Hopewell, but that's the majority.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Adam?
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. All right, we're moving on to the Personnel Committee. We're gonna need a roll call for that, but... We have to, no. I'm sorry? For Personnel?
Yeah.
So we're skipping in?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay. All right, so the Personnel Committee had a meeting right before this meeting today. And we would like to acknowledge, acknowledge four retirees, Kathy Brewer from Timberlane, Ricky Eng from Stony Brook, Joe Soji from Timber, Soji from Timberlane, and Michelle Alfred from Hopewell Elementary. We also discussed that we have some recent salary changes on the board agenda today, and that's as a result of negotiations. You will also see that we are hiring, hopefully today after our vote, some more substitutes for several positions. You'll see on the ECA appointments that we have lots of mentors that we will be approving today. And then we have, out of some of the negotiations, we have the executive secretary's job descriptions that we will be approving, and then an update to the public relations officer job description as well. So, I think we have to... Oh, so we need a motion? So I need a motion to, to approve the Personnel Agenda.
Motion.
Thank you. Any, oh, I need a roll call. See, I was on a roll.
Ms. Genovacy. Ms. Lou. Uh, Mr. Resnick.
Yes.
Mr. Suicki.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano. Ms. Driver.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The motion carries.
You sure you don't wanna do a recount? Seems close.
Stop it.
Oh my gosh. Get me all excited here. All right, so now we're on to Ed Program, which is also me. We met last week, last Tuesday. We had some proposal of some new courses from Ms. Baldwin. Help me out here, Vicky, if I'm missing something. There were some courses, the one that sounded really exciting to me was the Community-Based Creative Design. So that's exciting. The Latin II Honors and AP Chinese. Vicky, of course, gave her strong presentation. We went through a field trip review, making sure, you know, all looked good. And then, what else did we talk about? Some, some disposal of some unused materials. And then, I think that's it. Yeah, and I think that was, that was it. That was a good meeting. It was our first one for the year with all our new members, so. Looking good. All right, so after that, oh, we have to approve the course. We have to approve, we have to do a roll call for the course approvals, correct?
Can I just ask one question?
Of course.
Regarding to that, I saw like we have the Latin II Honors, just from the standpoint of, I think Ms. Laporte teaches all the Latin courses, so it's like, do we have teacher coverage for that and all that stuff?
I, I believe if I recall from the meeting, all the courses.
Yes. All right, so we need a roll call, a motion to have the roll call to vote on the course approval.
That's correct.
We have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
Okay, roll call. Uh, Ms. Lou.
Yes.
Mr. Resnick.
Yes.
Mr. Suicki.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Driver.
Yes.
Ms. Genovacy. Ms. Williams-Galliano.
All right. Moving on to Community Relations. Do we have a Community Relations meeting? We did not. Okay. All right. Policy as well? We have policy as a roll call. We're not doing that? Okay, so there was no call. Got it? All right. Moving on. We need to do the review of the board calendars. We need to have a motion for it.
Yep.
We need to have a motion so we can review our board calendar.
Motion.
Thank you. Thank you. Any notes?
No, we don't, we're gonna...
No, we don't have to do that?
After we set them.
So... Where do we want to start? What were you, Personnel is easy.
Meetings, the board meetings on the 13th.
We have a work session on the 6th.
On the 6th.
Is that also at 7?
Be at 7. We can start early if you'd rather.
I mean, if you wanna do finance, it makes sense to like lead into that or something.
We might need more time. We could, we can, we can start, we can do it at 5, I don't mind.
So the 6th, you're saying?
We could, we could.
We could do 5, I mean, you could leave, you wanna leave a retreat at 7, and we could do finance facilities 5 to 6 something, and give us a little extra time.
Okay.
Does that work for everybody?
Finance at 5?
Uh, it's the 6th, Anita.
Well, we...
Ed Program?
Yes, yeah, and I cannot do that, that Thursday. Yeah, works for me.
At 4:30?
Yeah.
Wednesday, 8 at 4:30. 5 would be better, but...
I'm 5, I'm fine with 5.
Yeah, 5, I think.
Lydia's 5, okay?
Yeah.
So 5 o'clock on the...
Okay, Personnel's gonna be 2:13 at 6:15, right before the board meeting. Policy?
So we're meeting this Friday. You wanna schedule another one?
You're probably good for the next meeting on the 26th. If you're gonna do the 27th, you're probably good.
I think we're good.
You want 8 AM?
8 AM on the 27th.
SEL, call it?
Yeah. So originally I had February 9th, but I actually just saw we have our AC, we're meeting with the administrators that morning. So would February 8th at 9 or 10 work via Zoom? Do you prefer time? It's 10 o'clock. Good, Mike? So you're looking, okay.
February 8th at?
10.
10?
Yes. Okay, great. Thank you.
Community Relations.
Now, do you wanna stack that and do Community Relations before, after SEL, or is it the other day better? Community Relations on Wednesday, 8. Does that work for you and Anita?
Yeah, you good with all that?
Yeah, I, I will.
All right, sounds good.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any notes, abstentions? Okay, motion carries? All right. All right, so it's time for our second public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Public comment is now open. Seeing none, we will now close public comment. And I think it's time for executive session. Do I ask for a motion first or read this first? Okay, so I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss harassment, intimidation, and bullying matters. No action will be taken.
Motion.
There you go.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? No's? Okay. We are in closed session.